A good evening, and welcome to the Cituette Plating Board Thursday, October 23rd, 2025. Plating Board meeting we held here at the Selectwood hearing in the Town Hall. We all know, we all have to be nice to each other. You're supposed to be generous, you're a second.
Second.
I would say. Good, it's sweet. You got a public hearing, proposed changes to the stormwater regulations. Ms. Joseph.
Well, right, we have Michelle from Horsey-Witten here, and so Michelle is going to briefly go over the, because we have a little bit of audience here, she could briefly go over the revised PowerPoint from last time before we talk about what changes we made to the document.
All right. Hi, it's nice to be here again, Michelle West, I'm Water Resources engineer at Horsey-Witten Group. And if you remember from our workshop back in September, this presentation that I think we pulled up here shortly, will look very familiar, but for those watching at home, want to make sure that we went through the information again, and then we'll touch on what has changed since then.
I'll share my screen, Sam.
Yep, go right ahead, you have that ability.
Thank you.
While we're waiting that to pop, just wanted to remind everyone that we do need to update Cituette's stormwater regulations to meet requirements from the MS4 permit through the EPA. The MS4 permit is a municipal separate storm sewer system permit, and it has certain requirements for towns and cities of a certain size throughout the state. So Cituette is not alone and needing to have this type of requirement. And so we'll just touch on some of the specifics of that. There we go. All right, I can go to the next slide. So just as a reminder of what stormwater is, this is the when it rains, or we get precipitation outside, and the water falls on our roofs and our streets, and even our active lawns. Much of that water runs off and into a storm drain system. So oftentimes there are catch basins on our roads, then discharged into pipes, and then outlet directly into our water bodies, most often without any treatment of any kind. So that is why the town has to have this permit. There are six minimum control measures that are part of the permit to make sure that all sectors do their part in improving the water quality in our towns. This includes public education, public involvement, illicit discharge detection and elimination, which sounds fancy, but it's just trying to keep non-stormwater out of a stormwater drain. Construction site runoff, stormwater, post-construction stormwater management, and good housekeeping and pollution prevention. That is intended for municipal facilities throughout the town, making sure that we're doing good practices for those facilities. So tonight, we are focused on minimum control measures four and five. That's the construction and post-construction stormwater management, and that is what is regulated through the stormwater regulations. All right, so the permit requires that municipalities have bylaws and/or regulations that address construction and post-construction site stormwater management to do the following at a minimum. It must be at least applicable to all land disturbances of one acre or more. It must include requirements for sediment and erosion control on active construction sites, and it must include requirements for water quality standards for post-construction sites. So if somebody's building a development, not only do they have to protect the land during construction when all of the earth is exposed to the rain, but also in the long run after that site is developed, there have to be measures in place to continually treat that stormwater before it is discharged. So Cituette's current bylaw and regulations, I think we do have stormwater bylaw and regulations that are already in place, and these meet many, but not all of the MS4 requirements. And so now the EPA is requiring the town to make updates by the end of this year to meet the permit requirements. So the existing language does not fully address the following items. Specific water quality performance standards, there are standards in the regulations, but they don't meet specific ones from the MS4 permit. Additional requirements for discharges to impaired water bodies. And then an overarching one acre threshold. Cituette's thresholds in general are much more stringent than that, but there's not that overarching kind of catch-all one acre requirement in there currently. And then some details for construction and post-construction management that the permit specifically calls out that weren't in regulations. It also has provided opportunities to incorporate other best practices and to streamline and try to simplify the existing language. So we've been working on revising the regulations, and on September 5th, there was a stormwater workshop to discuss the proposed revised regulations and to take feedback from the board as well as the public. And we took that information and did make some revisions to the regulations. So this hearing provides an opportunity for additional feedback and input so that we can finalize them to meet the deadline. And then as a reminder, the stormwater bylaw will then need to be revised to match the regulations, but that can't be done until spring, town meeting, or August. Okay, so you have hopefully received the version, the updated version of the regulations. And what we did to try to make it easy to follow is that the original revised changes that we had passed out before are shown in red in this document, and then the changes that we made since the workshop are shown in blue. So hopefully that made that a little bit easier to follow. So I wanted to point out, we can kind of go through it in more detail, however you'd like, what kind of the big picture items, is that we removed a definition, a portion of the impermeable surface definition that we had discussed at the workshop to remove the permeable paper caveat that was in there. And we removed the 80% threshold section with the procedural requirements. So that was on, and we added page numbers, so that's helpful. The 80% threshold, if you're following along, is on page seven. It starts on page seven, so that was removed at this point and could be revisited at the bylaw discussion, but for getting these regulations in place by the deadline, removed at this stage, as well as a section on the water resource action district on page eight. We did adjust the applicability section, let me see if I can find where that, that was the action back, on page six, just slightly, to better be more consistent with the bylaw in a couple of places and to hopefully be clear in its intent. And we adjusted the required BMP setback from a property line, and that is back. There it is, 14. Added some player client language for the intent of the 10-foot setback from the property line is not to be for any small BMP or component of a BMP, but really intended for those large practices that we want to make sure are set back from somebody else's property. So hopefully that addressed some of the concerns about that language. There was one just inconsistency with the stormwater handbook that we addressed under the recharge section on page 15. And then we added a small project allowance for section nine, and it's on page 17, to address the difficulties that some smaller projects may have and need some of the new water quality performance standards. It gives a little more flexibility to both the board and applicant. And then some other just minor text edits throughout. And that is really the main substance of these changes. Does anyone have any questions, or if you want to add anything?
So I, we, after, after the workshop, we sat down and we listened to what, we listened to what some of the comments were in the audience. I met last Friday with Greg Morris, and I explained some of the changes that we did. You know, taking out right now the definition of, you know, in the impermeable surface that, you know, all the stuff is supposed to be counted as impermeable. And the permeable paper is really the BMP. He was pleased that we took that up. I told him we took out the 80% stuff for now. I told him the stuff is coming back. I mean, they, they said that they would prefer to have it in the bylaw and as part of, you know, a public hearing, a meeting, so we did that. We listened and we did that because this really, this has to pass so the town doesn't have fines for, for the EPA. We did, we did put in a small project allowance, but it's not for every small project. You know, it's for sites where maybe you have exceedingly high groundwater. Maybe you have a difficult, difficult shape of the lot. So it says that the Stormwater Authority can allow some changes. Don't have to, but we can. There are, I mean, I'm going to be quite honest, there are times when it's been not feasible to meet the regulations on an existing site that, you know, of course, they want to overbuild with additions and pools. But, you know, you try your best to achieve the, the maximum tend to be the bylaw. And sometimes you just, because of our poor soils, we have to make, we have to make adjustments. You know, he, Mr. Morris was concerned about the setback to the property line, and I said, well, you know, there really needs to be a setback to the property line. Well, is it for everything? Well, it's the most important features, but you know, if swale has to go, you know, eight feet, well, okay. Maybe it has to go eight feet instead of 10 feet, but that's, that's huge, our judge. The idea is to have your stormwater so it doesn't flood your neighbors' property. I mean, but we, we can, you know, we, it's worded so that you can, we can make some calls based on the situation, which is exactly what we do now. We make it based on a situation of, you know, if somebody's really having a hard time, then it'll be fine. If you could send me all those, you said you were going to send me some of that stuff. If you could send me some of that stuff, because you said that basically if, if somebody's infiltrating, they should be able to meet the requirement for phosphorus if they're infiltrating with that.
Yes, as part of the permit documents, they include performance curves. So the way that you prove that you're meeting a certain root removal level is not to test it in place. It's, it's an assumptive approach. You use research from decades of these practices being in place. And so if you can treat or manage a certain volume, then you can assume that you're getting this root removal. And they have pretty detailed performance curves with that information as part of the permit. And it's different than kind of the older data that's been in the stormwater handbook since 2008. And I think that if people don't know where that is, that that would help them see that they can meet these requirements with the typical practices that they use.
Mr. Morris said he concurs with the rainfall data. Well, I think he told you one other night that he did, that he didn't, so, I mean. So I think all the changes that are in here are really needed for MS4. We've taken out anything extraneous, but it will be going in the bylaw.
Can I ask you a professional question as an engineer? Also, we hear from developers, does our stormwater regulations are way too stringent? Is that your perception?
Communities have different thresholds, and certainly the thresholds in Cituette are lower than the required MS4 thresholds, but I've seen similar thresholds in other places. So I don't think that it's terribly different from other communities. I do more often see exemptions for single-family home projects in other communities, but those are communities where that's not the type of development they're seeing. So every community adjusts their regulations for the type of development they're seeing. And so that makes sense in Cituette. I know that that's a lot of what you have here, so.
Any questions or comments for the board? I want to go to the public body reviews. Is there anybody online that would like to make a statement or ask a question or whatever?
Ms. Lambert, you have no virtual hands for this time.
We got very much here.
The cast of thousands.
So just to say, just a clarification, the red in the markup here was the original markup.
Yes.
So what we're talking about, the things we've, maybe clarify a little bit.
Right.
That are in blue.
Right, and blue is what we've taken out for this, for this round. And, you know, we see some of those in the bylaw.
Some of the blue, though, is additive. So we have both taken things out and added things as part of the blue. But anything in red, we are also doing, so both the added language and the strikeouts. So as a whole, we're incorporating that blue here.
Do, is, is the, is this now what you would consider aligned with MS4, but not beyond?
I think so. It is beyond MS4 because we have a, we, we regulate 15,000 square feet.
Yeah, that's pre-existing.
That's pre-existing, so we can add in stuff, so, you know, the phosphorus, et cetera, that align us with MS4. And we added more requirements for some of the plans that is in line with what, what MS4 is requiring.
And by adding a small project allowance that helps adjust, so we say at least, you have to at least do these requirements for those sites that are 40,000 square feet or more. That needs an MS4 permit. And then it gives a little more of that flexibility for the smaller projects. But it defaults at what you're using now as your requirements. So never, we go between the MS4 performance standards and what you're doing now, and that's, that's where the small project allowance comes in, if that makes sense.
Does that, the small project allowance, is that, is that then not utilizing this design storm definition?
No, it is using, everywhere we'll be using the design storm, the rainfall.
So there's no deviation from the design storm. And definition, the Atlas 14 plus, is part of MS4?
That is not specifically part of MS4, but it will be in the revised stormwater handbook as soon as that is finalized, and it is what most engineers are currently using as a design engineer myself.
And this, in so doing, this creates a much higher standard in terms of design storm waterfall, right? Than what currently exists there.
Right, so it's, it's not.
A big change.
It's not, it's not seven inches anymore, it's, what is it, eight point, eight point something? So each storm has got, has, is a little bit more rainfall than what we're currently used to see.
But to clarify, they are not bigger storms than we're seeing.
Right.
No, we're using a higher probability.
It's just that people have been designing based on 1960s rainfall data. But the MS4 requirements that we're adding into the regulations are focused on water quality, and water quality is based on a one inch of runoff. That's, that kind of been a focus of bringing the regulations up to the MS4 requirement. The design storm issue is, is what designers should be using because it reflects the rainfall that we are seeing. So there's kind of two separate things there, because the MS4 piece is focusing on water quality, and that is clearly one, one.
To our, our initial standard is velocity and model, right? So we are changing the design model, right?
Likely a lot of the projects, you've already been seeing use this data in the whole thing.
Right, this, this is codified, this, there is no other options, this is the only one.
Yes, yes.
So Karen, this is not the overtime of to be dealing with this, right?
You, you'll be dealing with, the, the hope is that we get the stormwater bylaw for the spring town meeting. So we will be, you know, this will be the end of the working on the regulations, but then the bylaw is the next thing that we should tackle. Okay.
If these regulations are not currently, will not currently support it by the bylaw, are they, are they binding?
Yes.
Regulation, even though the bylaw has a different standard.
But it's not that different. I mean, we've asked.
Just asking the question, right?
No, they're, they're meant to be used in conjunction, both together.
I get it, but if you're saying you need to amend the bylaw, the bylaw is not currently ready to support what's in here.
Not 100%, no.
Right, okay, so that's what I'm asking, is where there are differences, is that, is that a problem? Is that a legal issue?
Town council didn't think so. And we took that, the only thing that town council thought could be a problem was the 80% stuff. And so we have taken that out right now. So, you know, we may have to do rates again, you know, after we redo the bylaw.
And so I guess where I'm going is maybe we went to town meetings, pass bylaws, and then the tax break. So if we're sitting out there with this differentiation between regulations and bylaws, the town, town legal council is saying that it's not a problem, we're not going to face.
I'll re-verify with them.
Yeah, I, I get it, yeah, we want to change it, right, but we've, we've been through that dance before. Doesn't always happen, right?
Actually, the bylaw was closer to some of this language than you would think.
Yes, yes, it is, it, it is.
So what are the tweaks we have to make?
Some definitions need to be aligned, for sure.
So like definitions meaning like design storm?
Well, I'm not sure.
Using their standard?
But that would be.
It's, it's not, it's not in the.
Not in the bylaw, though?
It's not in the bylaw. I think we have to, I mean, that was going to be my question when we started, when I started working on the bylaw, too, Michelle, do we have to have all the definitions? I'm not sure we do, because we have the regulations which are enacted to enforce the bylaw. But, I mean, we would obviously want to put some of the stuff with the phosphorus, all that kind of stuff, water quality in the bylaw to, to show that this is what we need to do.
The way a lot of communities look at the bylaw versus the regulations is they actually keep the bylaw pretty simple and focused on administrative and applicability components. And then a lot of the details of the performance standards tend to be in the regulations. The way that your bylaw is currently set up is kind of mixing both. And so that's something we can talk about if we want to simplify and maybe even strip down the bylaw and have the important applicability pieces and that sort of thing in there. And leave the performance standards in the regulations, but we haven't gotten to that point yet. So I, but I've seen other communities do it that way, and it makes it a little simpler when you update regulations for the future, so you don't have to continuously go back to the bylaw. So it's, it's something to, to think about as we go through that process.
Yeah, I just don't want to be in the middle of a debate with people developing things saying, well, that doesn't apply, but that's not really a viable part.
It doesn't. We have the bylaw and the regulations, they're not exact permit, so.
And that's a stopwind law for us sometimes.
What was that?
That can be a stopwind law for us sometimes, but that's how I understand the bylaws.
Okay.
We did that one, but the regulations were there to en, to enforce available, what they were.
Well, that's okay, I mean, as long as the regulations are tied to the requirements of the bylaw. To me, that works. That's, the only question I'm asking, are there things in the regulation that aren't really addressed by laws that could have a big discrepancy?
I don't think there's a big discrepancy.
So the water falling stuff, the phosphorus stuff, that's addressed by laws?
No, that's not.
It's not specifically, but it actually uses.
No, I mean, in terms, you can link it to the section.
Yes, yes. Right now, I mean, we, we do have stuff, we have performance standards in the bylaw, and it does talk about, you know, recharge water, pre-treatment of water quality. But it's, it's in vague terms, whereas now the regulations.
I get that, I just, I just want to make sure there's linkage here or something.
Yes, there is linkage.
Big change you could talk about.
Right, there is linkage.
So I just don't. The development requirement is still in the bylaw.
Yeah.
Anything else?
So there had been someone initially on the phone who raised a hand.
I have one more question.
Okay.
I think you said the MS4 overarching requirement was one acre. And everything I see here is like 40,000 square feet. So, or is it one acre or is it 40,000 square feet?
A lot of communities use the 40,000 as a, as an acre. It's not 43, 5, 6, 0, but often what's used is as a standard here. And that's.
Because it's an even number. I mean, you could say over one acre, say.
I believe there was already a place in either your bylaw, I think it was in the bylaw that referred to 40,000. And so that was kind of consistent throughout, but you can certainly make it specific.
I moved it at 40,000, I, I was trying to reconcile one acre to this. I, I, I moved it at forty thousand, I, I was trying to reconcile one acre to this. And you, and you don't need to.
I, I'm a numbers person, I like a forty three, five, six, zero myself, but I think like a lot of assessors and, um, and other like they use a forty thousand as a, as being the acre. But that was in, um, some existing language, so I did.
So there's no issue if you're having more stringent, but.
No issue. Um, it's here, it may be adjusted, they're undecided.
I mean, our zoning bylaw has, well, instances where we talk about an acre and we talk about forty thousand square feet too. I mean, we require forty thousand square feet of upland in the araline zone.
Right.
Yet we have stuff in there that refers to dwelling units per acre. And it's meant to be per acre.
But in most books, an acre is a very defined term.
It's a very defined term to describe, yes.
It's not for one acre.
I agree with you.
Yeah, I, I agree with you.
Close, but not quite.
Well, I, uh, to go back to the argument that Mr. Most had for us, which was, um, to implement something like this on a single house lot. At that time, he felt it was odorous, I personally do not, because our job is to protect the town, not to make sure that our developers make a lot of money. So if, if we felt that it was important that every house lot had to adhere to this, I, I would not have probably prepared. We would get a lot of pushback from developers, but I think it's my duty to protect the, the overall town. So that's, I think, Steve, I kind of that same way, like, it doesn't matter how many, unless still adhere to what it is that we want you to do because it is for the greater good of the town. Okay, so just in that we do agree.
I agree.
But my sense is that creating small project allowance to address effectively that.
But they still have to meet criteria.
Right, they still have to, I mean, it's, it's, it's not for every small project. It's, it's for ones that have major issues with soils or maybe, uh, uh, you know, we have some unusually shaped lots in the top situation. Um, but, so we've tried to put some allowance in. I'm gonna tell you right now, we have a lot of applications that are twenty four point five percent, you know, twenty three point eight percent, fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety five square feet of impermeable. You know, so technically, they, they don't need a stormwater permit. Are, are some of them horrible plans?
Yeah.
Absolutely. But you know what? They can do it because it doesn't meet the bylaw. And they do do.
We know that. And that's a detriment to their neighbors.
It is a detriment.
Yes, and then the other thing that I have seen in the force of healing events, it's not just the dwelling that has been, that's already existing. Somebody comes along and they re-landscape their property and they change the water flow so that, but there's nothing in our bylaw that will give that, is there?
No, I mean.
When somebody redoes a driveway, redoes landscaping and changes the water flow,
if, if they don't meet any of the other criteria, then no, they don't need a permit.
Right.
And they can, they can flood somebody's property, okay?
That's fine.
It's not, it's not right that they flood somebody's property.
It's not, it's not a, it's not an enforcement issue that come here, right?
Right.
In other words, that becomes the building department, enforcement issue, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Ironically.
Ironically.
I mean, you don't, we don't have, no, what I'm saying is we don't have the authority to enforce it.
Building approves the permit. Not on something that hasn't been issued a stormwater permit.
Correct, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Right, I can issue fines and enforcement on something that's issued a stormwater.
Yeah, if we have issued a permit, that's different.
Right.
But it doesn't have a permit.
But not on something that's not, that no, I, I cannot issue. And so we can't control major landscaping. But we have, there's a criteria in there what's exempt. And so landscaping, um.
If it disturbs a certain amount of area, it does get kicked in, whether it's landscaping or a house.
Right. Okay, so it does.
And, and the criteria we've set for small projects of the bylaws is, is the clear documentation of the increaseable of meeting any particular state, meeting standard three or four, right?
Yes, but to clarify that, it's not going, oh, you can't meet what's in there today, you don't have to do anything. It's going, you can't meet this new requirement, so you at least have to do your current requirement, or your currently requirement.
The requirement that can't meet is infeasible, not that, well, I've, um, built a bigger house, so I can't do that. It's, it's, it's not that kind of, right?
No. No, it's.
And that there must have been sort of a clear demonstration of why it's infeasible.
Right. Right, yes. Not because they don't feel like doing it, no.
Well, I guess my point is that, you know, if you're doing something, buildings, a house, a lot, you have unilateral decision-making authority to make it bigger or smaller, higher or lower within the constraints of, of the bylaws, right? So because you've run it out to the limits of build and now you can't meet these criteria, that doesn't make it infeasible.
That's right.
Right, so I think we just need to be clear when we're, when people are proposing things, that we need some really clear demonstration infeasibility.
Right. Right. Well, and there's, um, language in there that specifically says space constraints such as those resulting from applicants desire development layout may not necessarily constitute sufficient size constraints to one, so that's.
May not necessarily.
So just because you.
This sounds still overly big.
Just because you desire to build out your whole lot, if you don't have room for the stormwater, then you have to, you have to consider the stormwater in your design and how big your project is.
Well, should we be more specific? Does not constitute. May not necessarily sound like wishy-washy language.
Well, space constraints may be applied if it's a redevelopment and they stay within the existing footprint and there's still not enough space, because that's how small the law is. So sometimes that may be something that people weren't considers. So I think this is just putting out there that your hopes and dreams were sprawling across the complete lot, doesn't make it a space constraint.
May not necessarily.
May I ask for a patron?
Yes, one seventeen.
Twenty seventeen, thank you.
So you, you would prefer to take out not necessarily?
Yeah, I think that's.
I agree.
I think that's sort of communicate, communicating a vagueness that we're not intended to communicate.
So.
I mean, yeah, I get it in a specific instance where maybe it is a redevelopment, it's vague, it's a footprint. Uh, but it's somebody building a new house there or raising it and building, like, you know, if it's greenfield and they're building a house, and the question is, why? Why is it infeasible to, you know, comply with these standards?
So you wanna take out necessarily?
Yes.
Does any, is everybody okay with taking that out?
I am.
I don't think it adds it, you know, adds it really.
Okay.
That's fair, and it, it may communicate too much flexibility.
Take a little bit of wood, yeah.
Yeah, that works.
Okay.
Did you say you have somebody online? Well, the person on the phone down there in the bottom had a hand raised, so. If you're ready for that.
Did you take a cluster from those?
Just ask.
It's up to you.
Yeah, somebody. I could just please state your name and your address, please?
Yes, this is Jen Smith at, um, three, three, nine First Parish Road from Situate Conservation. I just wanted to let you know I was on the call and I've been working with planning and Horsley Witten on, uh, the updates to the regulations for stormwater.
Hey, do you have anything to add to that, or you like what we have?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Do you, do you like, are you satisfied with what has been presented?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, anybody else? You all set, Mr. Pritch?
Yeah.
You all set, anything? All right. Ms. Joseph Rossa?
Right.
Next steps?
After we have a motion.
Motion. No, well, I just. Changes to the stormwater regulations, I move to accept the changes as written. Storm regulations stated October twenty, twenty twenty five, effective date of October twenty seven, twenty twenty five. As written?
As, as, as written, as modified.
As modified. As modified. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Yeah. I put all the effective date of Monday to make us, uh, to allow time to get, um, the bylaw and get it up. Okay, thank you.
You're fully supporting the deal?
She said she has money in her contract or the bylaw, so that would be.
Excellent, yes.
That's something excellent.
Now she worked the same person all the way through.
All right, right on that.
Now, the immediate, the immediate went to a continued public hearing, um, for major site review was so it was not been.
It's seven thirty.
Oh, never mind.
Okay. Why don't we work on some of the other stuff first?
She could have pulled minutes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, move the Flynnwood minutes of ten, nine, twenty five.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Accounting. Move to approve, um, following purchase orders, number two, six, zero, three, nine, zero, two, in the amount of six hundred twenty nine dollars and seventy five cents period services related to the nineteen fourth place project. Number two, six, zero, three, nine, oh, three, in the amount of one thousand nine hundred sixty seven dollars, fifty cents for period services related to twenty one central app slash seven Marshfield app project. And two thousand six hundred two, six, zero, three, nine, zero, six, in amount of two thousand one hundred ninety fifty period related to the Countryway project, seven ninety nine, Countryway project. Two, six, zero, four, zero, nine, zero, in the amount of two thousand two hundred ten for guaranteed account refund related to the seven one hundred watt, number four project. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Next is to contribute general decision on the annual town meeting twenty twenty five bylaws.
Isn't that exciting? All right, so I sent you all the decision, um, that was dated October thirteenth from the AG. Um, and we, we had to change a few things, okay? Um, you know, I don't think it was the, it's not the end of the world and she, they basically approved the bylaw, but in the definitions of accessory dwelling unit attached, accessory dwelling unit detached, and dwelling unit, we had to take out, this definition does not include a trailer, however, mounted. Because they feel that, um,
it's always a pretty good access.
Because, you know, a trailer could include a mobile home. And they think that mobile homes, now referred to as manufactured homes, can be used for ADUs.
So we can have a, reminds me, I, I don't understand. So now we can have a trailer on somebody's property as an ADU?
Um.
No, they're saying that, saying take, leaving that in. Who's, I mean, a mobile home.
Right, so we have to take it out.
Oh, okay.
We have to take it out.
Take out mobile home?
Yeah.
Good, works for me.
We have to take it.
So that was, that was what they were saying? Or were they saying take it out, or were they saying you have to allow for?
Wait a minute.
We have to take it out of our wording.
I just don't allow for.
To allow for. I mean, so what we're going to have to do is we're going to have to revisit if we have to add any more definitions. Um, they had a definition of manufactured home that we did not choose to put in our bylaw. I mean, so basically.
And what is the definition of a manufactured home? Did they say that?
Um, I don't think they said so, what, in the, um.
So I mean, I, I get the notion that, although I'm not sure, I, I love it, but I get the notion that you could buy a manufactured home, put it on a foundation and install. People have done that in Situ.
Yes.
People have done that in Situ.
Right, so that's fine, and that I guess, right?
That could be, that could be.
Trailer is a different concept.
Mobile home. A trailer.
Like, if somebody pulls in a trailer on wheels and sets it up and that's an accessory home.
No, because it, no, it needs to be on a foundation.
That's the definition.
A trailer could include a mobile home, now referred to as a manufactured home, and thus made also include much more dwelling under the regulations.
Not true, what, what do they need to say?
Rebuild.
I don't know, right, I don't know.
So, did, we can.
It's not specific, I'm confused.
So, however, it's.
Well, I, I just wanna make sure that the definition does not include somebody pulling up a trailer or a urban, so, a salt vehicle, calling that an accessory home.
No, that, that's.
It could be hooked into a sewer or something.
Right, yeah, so, that, well, that's not a home in Situ, right? How are we gonna look at that?
Well, that's what you're saying, that, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, I would assume a home has to have either sewer or septic.
Yes, it does. A pre-designed dwelling unit assembled and equipped with internal plumbing, electrical or systems similar prior to movement to the site where such dwelling units are fixed to a foundation and connected to external utilities or any portable structure with walls, a floor, a room designed to use as a dwelling unit, transportable in one or more sections and affixed to a foundation or connected to external utilities. So it has to have, be connected to utilities and it has to be on a foundation.
So we need that definition, you know?
Potentially, I think we need that definition.
Yes. Cause we don't wanna leave the word trailer just hanging out there.
I didn't know.
So, we already had it, eh, we already have that in our, we have that in our definitions. We said, um, we said a trailer cannot be used as a dwelling unit.
Right.
And so if it can't be used as a dwelling unit, why should it be used as an accessory dwelling? It can't be, but, so we may have, we have to, I'm still working with town council on things that we might have to change in the future for the bylaw, okay? So we have to take that wording out. We have to take out in fact.
So Karen, just to clarify, on taking that wording out, we're now allowing those.
We're allowing mobile homes, we're not necessarily allowing trailers.
Right, we're allowing it because.
Well, the trailer was the exclusion in our case, right?
Right, right.
Now we're removing the exclusion.
Right, because the.
So now it sounds like it could be read.
The speech.
It could be.
Very much okay.
But the trailer has to fit that other definition.
It has to fit that, it has to be, has to have permanent utilities and be affixed to a foundation.
So we don't need that definition, the fact that it's in state law is good.
I, I think so, but I, I'm gonna check with town council.
I'm a bit of a, my house came in three pieces. But I'm, I'm concerned about a, a trailer. No, a trailer. Yes, we are not engaged.
Well, they, we already say in our bylaw that you're not supposed to live in a trailer. We already say that in our zoning file. Okay, so then we had to take out under five thirty point two D, an accessory dwelling unit associated with the principal dwelling must be located within the interior of and under the same roof as the principal dwelling and a structure attached thereto on a detached structure of the same lot that complies with all required setback, building height, and yard requirements for our primary structure to the greatest extent allowable by law. We have to take out for our primary structure. Basically, the state law maintains you have to allow the least permissible setback. Basically, the state law maintains you have to allow the least permissible setback for an ADU. So, I've already done questioning.
Back up, back up, what's the least permissible?
Problem one.
Isn't it, isn't it the required setbacks?
No. Okay? Not technically. Okay, we have a section in the zoning bylaw that says you can, you know, have a single-story detached accessory building eight feet from the property lot. They would consider that the least permissible.
You just read, what is that definition under?
Six twenty point three setback and yard requirements.
So you can have small shed.
Not in, yeah.
It's not an ADU bylaw, but, so, we have asked town council the question. So what is, what, what is our least permissible setback that we have to go by for an accessory dwelling? And he's looking into that right now.
I would think it would have to be the least permissible occupied.
Yeah, I would agree.
Well, I.
Right? I mean, it's not, it's not a shed or chicken coop or anything like that.
Right, but this hasn't been an issue so far. So far, everybody who's come in for an ADU has met the bylaw because we told them that it had to be for a primary structure. And everybody has met that. So, we, we know some instances coming up where this may be an issue. So we're trying to clarify.
No, we had to clarify, the AG just unconfirmed.
Right, the AG, you clarified. Absolutely, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, she muttered it out.
Some of the, some of the logic in here, it is, is not, it's not insisted.
Why don't we say for an occupied structure?
It's not.
Why don't we change that language?
Well.
Over there, that says a non-occupied structure.
Instead of a primary structure.
Well, maybe.
That's the one in the bylaw, um.
Well, and it's approved, your changes will have to go back to town meeting.
Yeah, of course.
Right, but I mean, we can.
Right, and not, so far, all of the things that the AG struck are not applicable.
Right, so we just.
We're, we're flying in that.
We are flying with those words taken out.
Yes. I have to say, I do object to the notion that they said they had one person to talk to.
Yeah, me too.
And somehow incited that they were going to implement.
And you know what person that was, don't you?
Doesn't matter what person it was, why is one person?
Yeah.
A family over comes, you know, town meeting?
Yeah.
Well.
Because.
But we all don't. Well, we all had the same reaction to that, which is, we, we spoke to town, who wants to change here?
So, what we've done is, the, the new bylaw is available online now. We will be getting new cop, new copies of the bylaw printed with these wordings taken out. We.
So we're removing also the thing about at least one private space.
Yes, at least, we have to take out at least. Yeah.
And then what else?
I think that was it.
References to single-family residential property.
Yes, and we have to take that out.
And why didn't take them six months to do this?
Busy, busy, busy.
They spent, I, they didn't spend five minutes on this thing.
Yeah.
This is a fairly long brief.
Yeah.
So, we did everything and the bylaw is, you know, we're working on getting it, we'll be working on getting it printed, it's available online. So we're using the new bylaw. That doesn't mean that there's not questions associated with it. I mean, if you, we, we, we've had some controversy over one of the ones you approved last time. Uh, twenty meeting house, let, twenty, twenty meeting house, okay? Uh, you guys took down a condition that I had added because the building commissioner said they have to meet the building code. Well, the woman there maintains, well, the law doesn't say you have to meet the building code. The law says you can, you have one entrance. So, my question to town council is, does the bill, does the, does the ADU bylaw trump the building code? And so, I, I've actually meeting with town council before, um.
It seems like a ridiculous interpretation.
Exactly, you know, it seems like a ridiculous interpretation, but I'm, Bob and I are meeting with him on November third before, before town meeting. To try to get some of these seemingly simple questions answered because they are potentially going to impact things in the future.
What, what was the, was, they had a section about the short-term rental issue? Did they have an objection?
No, they said that could stand. They said, they said that could stand, and I just got.
But they raised it because.
Um.
They didn't think it was clear enough. I, I didn't wade through all the.
I didn't wade through that one. Eh, I mean, I read it once a while ago, but they're raising it that, you know, we have to make sure we interpret it fairly, et cetera. And so, I have now received a draft, uh, I have a restrictive covenant, fill in the blank form. That I will give to people so that they can record it prior to they getting their occupancy permit. And basically, it says you can't use your ADU as um a short-term rental.
Right, this, this is, this is about enforcing. This is about what we say we're entitled to.
Right, they up, right, the conversation.
Enforcing violation.
Yeah.
We can say town's reasonable fees possible.
But someone challenged us. So, you know, we did the best we could, and if we have to add some stuff for the spring town meeting, we'll have to add some stuff for the spring town meeting. I mean, there's a number of changes that have resulted from this that I'm already working on, um. That, that I'm already working on. I mean, we now have ADUs. You're technically allowed to have stairs and decks on the, and decks right to the property lot. Well, um, working on a change to that. Um, you know, we're, we're, I'm not working on a um continuous lot area um change to the bylaw too because. Mr. Vogel thinks that what we have in the bylaw is unclear. So, you know, we will be having, we are, I am working on zoning bylaw changes, and if you see something that you think needs to be changed, obviously, let, let me know.
Miller, we've got you up already.
Shall we go to Cushing, or you want to put down offer fee notes?
Um, well, it's not seven thirty yet, so why don't we go to Cushing? So, we had a discussion about storing of earthquake areas at the Cushing school for the new Halloway Elementary School project, which we just saw remember.
The earthquake.
Alright, so, when the board. Yeah. When the board approved, um, you know, the new Halloway school, I don't remember during the public hearing that we were ever told. That um demo of Cushing was going to be part of the contract.
I thought it was.
What?
I didn't remember that at all.
I was under the impression that demolition.
Oh, it was gonna be a demolition following the opening of the museum.
Yes, right, but how the store.
But hell no. Wait a minute.
But how the, we're not.
Or talking Cushing. Yeah, I was, I was under the impression that that was part of the program.
On Cushing.
Well, it wasn't stated during the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, it has come to our attention that the contractor, right now, would like to take two thousand cubic yards of loan, screen loan. Because it's, there's not enough room for it on the Halloway site. They want to use three triaxle trucks. With about fifteen loads a day, or total approximately forty-five loads, done in about a week. Um, and they want to move it over to the Cushing school and store it for two years. Um, because ultimately, that, when the Cushing school is demolished, they're going to need a loan to fill in the area.
Of course, they've already, I have a benefit for Cushing.
Well, I would say, let's see, the detail won't have, right? I mean, all the people adjacent to it. I mean, is it gonna be a job like that, or are they gonna have erosion control?
Yes, they are, they're going to have erosion control.
Have we seen that?
No, we haven't seen it, we don't.
Okay, well, then I'm not buying it till we see it.
Yeah, we know that they said, they told us today that they're gonna have a chain link fence, silk walls, and sprayed with cement.
And how is it going, how big is it?
I don't know, two thousand cubic yards.
It must be a tiny size.
That, that's volume, that's not height.
I, I don't know how high.
And, you know, how, how should it be done to, so that the adjacent neighbors don't have to look at it for ten years?
Okay, I do like what neighbors.
So I don't know adjacent neighbors.
The triaxle like the neighborhood.
And.
I mean, people live in neighborhood.
Yeah, but kids.
Try to add S Cushing, but we got to go all the way through the neighborhood to get to that school. That's correct. You have to go, you have to go.
I think they keep it, the police constituent by the railroad tracks.
Didn't they have, didn't they have a, a storage on the original?
It's hanging out over there.
On the original design.
I'm sorry, is Cushing getting knocked down right now?
No, no, not till it's done.
Not till the kids get it out.
So they're gonna dump it there while the kids are in school?
Yes. So, this is the plan that I received. So, this is Cushing school, this is where they want stockpile. Oh, actually, that's not even what they told me today. Alright, this is not what they told me today. What they told us today is that it's gonna go here. It's, so it's not even gonna go on the plan, on the plan that they marked, like they marked up.
But where's the field back here?
The field, the field is down here.
Sorry, you gotta go, where do we come in to Cushing school?
Come into Cushing school up here.
And they're really.
So, it's a hard left.
To the left side of the school.
They're putting it in, in here, not where they showed me here.
So this field's out, this can't get there anymore?
No, this field will still be usable.
But isn't this the parking, this is the driveway to the.
They're putting it on grass.
They're gonna be putting it in, in this grass area right here.
Beside the building.
Beside the building.
Right next to the building.
Because that used to be.
Beside the building, the kids who stole them from the school?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's just, that was the regulation, um, the grass field, but they couldn't water it, so it never had. No, that's in the backlog.
Why, why should they have to put it in there?
Uh, which is where we saw it, right there.
The strauss field.
Where, where's this on their original plan? At Hallow?
Uh, it wasn't, no, it wasn't, we never, I'm not sorry, we never saw anything.
And they have.
We.
We have to have.
Yes, but it wasn't, they just told us you're gonna have to remove, they were gonna have, they didn't tell us how they're gonna construct the facility. They told you it was a means and methods contract. And so.
Also, figure out means and methods on site.
Yeah, they say.
And tell us there's no room.
Yeah, there, there's no room on site, is what they said, they cut down all the trees and.
Well, they knew that before. So why are they coming to us now?
Uh, we don't know. And the hate to us in the, the, we are, we are demeaning, is that it's because it's public building, and do what they, they do what they want.
Who's they?
The contractors.
But why can't they put it, do you know what I'm talking about, on um, um. Manchale gets filled in, what's the word, what?
I mean.
Captain Pierce, right at the railroad. Here it goes.
The salt. Well, you got, you got the DPW, yeah.
Why don't they put it over there? First of all, they're not driving through a neighborhood, there's.
I don't think there's room in the DPW for.
Let's ask the DPW first.
For two thou, for two thousand cubic yards.
I don't know how big that is, so, that's really not.
Well, so he told me it's the length of the school.
Whoa.
So if you look at the building, yeah, of the, if you look at the front of the building, it's to the left. And it goes from, it is the length of the school. Not to be too high, and it's gonna be seated, I said, but, there are children in here.
So they're gonna box, so they're gonna seat it, so it's gonna be like grass?
Yes, so both, also both lie away, I tell you, well.
So you submit.
One of the reasons for doing this.
Well, if you approve it tonight, they're gonna start on Monday.
No, no way.
No way.
I want to see what they're doing to you. And if it's not, if it's not on that plan, then submit an updated plan. And then, you know, what's the, I, I agree with Rebecca, what's the roof again?
And how many, and how many fronts are they taking, well, there's only, there's only one route into Cushing.
We, we talked about that today.
There's one route into Cushing, and it's through a neighborhood.
Well, there's still roads which can't put on acres.
You go, there are already so many parked trucks.
I know.
When I walk around in the morning, it is.
Well, I told him, I said, you know, so, I grew up in that neighborhood, the next year, my dad, yeah, of, of Jason's, and I said to him, this is a very fabulous.
How does the school personnel feel about all those?
He said it's fine.
We were told that the principal says it's fine.
White department says it's fine, they haven't talked to the police department.
Well, I've talked to, you've tried, and, and they have talked to the police department. And Mark Thompson is of the opinion this is a planning board decision, but if you should allow this to go, to be. You know, you're going through a small active neighborhood, and it would, we would have to have hauling hours. Um, probably like nine to two, just like, I mean, just like there's hauling hours at the school, at the Halloway school right now. You know, they can't haul before nine, and they have, they, their hauling hours are nine to three.
And that's why we get the trust, seven thirty.
They are coming from there.
And I, and I, so they're gonna dump the stuff at the school while the kids are at school?
Yeah, for three days.
Yes.
Gonna take three days to take those.
Oh.
No, we're gonna take three days.
Okay, that makes me feel a little bit.
No, it's not continuous, like I told you.
It's not continuous.
They told us, looks like it's three days.
It's two thousand cubic yards and forty-five, they said the forty-five truckloads. On triaxle, not eighteen wheels, like, like neighbor's trucks.
Three days, it's fifteen truckloads.
Yeah.
For them.
Yeah.
So they'll be coming every five months.
So, I'm gonna tell you right now that if you have any questions, the OPM is on, is online. If you want to ask the OPM any questions, Alison, Alison Bar, if, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask the OPM. OPM works for the town.
I'm drawing.
Okay.
Okay, where this is actually gonna go. Provide the.
Definitely.
The soil erosion control, right?
I have a.
Because they're gonna, if they're gonna seed it, it's not gonna seed immediately, right?
I drove seeded.
That's what they said at the beginning.
They said they would have seeded.
I've seen plenty of hydroseeds washed down the, the tube when it rained too soon, right?
Right, yeah, no, I, I get.
Yeah. I, I, how high, right?
She's up, she's up. And then also.
And, and I, I appreciate, you know, you want to talk about it, but I'd love to see it on a piece of paper.
Is there anywhere else that's offered to go?
Yeah, what other options that we consider?
I, I did ask that question, I didn't get an answer.
Well, they asked. We were talking.
Okay, well, let's ask, uh.
Alison, I'm sure this would be optimal place because I have to go there. Apparently, there was a conversation about sending it offsite someplace else, they said, well, we're meeting at the school, so why don't we just take it there? So, Alison, could you join us, please?
Hi, sorry, I was trying to, I was trying to unmute, but I realized I needed to raise my hand.
That's okay.
Um, so yes, let me just explain, because there's a couple things I think that were um, um, maybe misrepresented. Um, the Cushing demo has always been part of the project that was um presented as part of the, the, the building.
That's the planning board.
To, to the. Yes, um, so that was.
But we're not talking about Cushing down here.
I know. I understand.
We're talking about moving materials, right?
I understand, the only reason I bring that up is because the reason that the site contractor and the general contractor are proposing to move this soil to the Cushing site. Is because eventually that building will be demoed in twenty twenty-seven, and they need, they will be needing the soil, so they're just proposing, rather than having all this good soil that's being taken offsite right now, you know, it's part of their soil management plan, part of their, their, um. What they own in the contract, they're taking this good soil and moving it to a facility just to get rid of it, because there's no room on the Halloway.
And, and it's the Cushing. Is the Cushing. And, and is the Cushing, is the Cushing demo awarded for a fixed price?
Oh, the Cushing demo has been part of the, the, this general contract, it's, it was part of.
It's awarded for a fixed price?
It's awarded for, uh, a fixed price that was included in the bid, um, for the Hathaway.
Okay, and, and if, as we go along building the new school. We exceed our budget and our price, is it potentially a possibility they would defer the demolition of the Cushing School to keep it in budget?
Oh, I, I wouldn't recommend doing that, that would, um.
I wouldn't recommend it, but somebody's gotta sum up with the money if you overrun.
We're, we, we don't, we're gonna be overrun.
The first time that somebody said, let's cut scope.
Oh, we, I don't, I don't think we need to do that. Why, why would we wanna do that?
May I interject?
You don't have the money.
Oh, we have the money, oh, we absolutely, we have the money, we, we were sixteen million dollars under budget by, with this general bid and part of that, uh, uh, what is owned in, in the general contract right now is the demolition of Cushing. We are, we are not gonna, going to overrun that budget.
I have to interject that the town member is putting together a committee to look at the reuse of Cushing School.
Yes.
And that's the, so that means that it might not come down.
Oh, no, that doesn't mean it won't come down. So right now, let me just explain, let me back up just a little bit. So what is owned in the general contract right now, um, as part of the Hathaway School project is the demolition of the Cushing School and leveling the site. So that just means like giving, like we're putting grass and seed down. It's gonna be, you know, nothing is there. Right now, there is, I understand, a committee that's been developed to discuss what is gonna, how that site's going to be developed. Like, I, I know that there's needs for fields and there's, you know, other needs within the town, so a committee's been put together to, to talk about what the best use of that area is, but there's never been any discussion of not demoing the Cushing School. The, that has always been part of this project, it's been designed as part of the Hathaway Building Project. The Hathaway School will come down and the Cushing School will come down, and that's all owned with this general contract that we have signed on and, you know, can, has started as, as of the end of August. So we are not saying that we're gonna be over budget. I think right now what the, what is happening is there's all the soil that's on the Hathaway Site. And it's now just being trucked out, it's in the process, I'm sure if you've driven by, you've seen, being trucked out of the site and going to a facility because there's nowhere to, to stockpile it on site. We're, we can use, reuse some of it. As part of their bid, they captured reusing some of the soil at the Cushing Site. They're gonna need it anyway, so they would be trucking in material in two years when they tear the building down and level the site, they would need it then. But right now, what they're proposing to do, rather than get rid of this good soil and bring it to a facility, they're just saying, let's bring it now and leave it there until we need it in two years. So that, that's kind of what we're, you know, what they're asking, it was the, the idea they came up with and said, you know, we're, we're, if there's a location on the site that we can leave some of the soil there, then that's what we're asking to do. Is the, the, from the contractor. And so we could meet with.
And they're giving you, they're giving you a cost rate for that?
Um, it was part of their bid, included in their, their bid price. So it's not a cost to move it, it's just, that's what they, they captured in their bid.
Well, presuming, presuming they, they wanna move it somewhere else because it's cheaper to do it than do what they're doing now. Which is what they bid on.
No, to move it to a facility is actually, it's, um, it's not cheaper to bring it to a facility. That involves testing and, oh, okay, sorry.
I know that. Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying. So you're gonna let them off the hook of what they bid on.
No, he told me today that the bid had reuse of the loan in the contract. That's what he told me today, the general, the general contractor.
Yeah, it's how they priced it.
He never said, the way we're gonna reuse it, it's stored it.
No, he got, no, they just, they just had a price for reusing a loan in their, their bid.
That's how, that's how they priced it, that, they were explaining that that's how they priced it, they priced, you know, they could have priced exporting all of the soil and then importing more soil when we need it at Cushing in two years. Or, but what they did in order, you know, as a cost-saving measure is part of how they, they, you know, estimated the job, they said, oh, well, all of this has been pre-characterized as less than RCS one material, which is, you know, good material for re, loam that is good for reuse. Um, you know, to level the site. They said, you know, we can save some money here, it's just how they, it's just how they estimated the job. Um, so, you know, they came on board and, at the end of August, and we, you know, they came up with this soil management plan, and this was, um, part of it as what they're, they proposed and, you know, that's why we're coming to you now. I think the reason I mentioned that Cushing was always part of the job is that I do think that we would be asking for this in two years, you know, regardless because they would need to be bringing loam in to level the site, at, you know, after the building comes down to bring the loam in to, to level the site.
Yeah, that's different though, right? They'd be bringing it and laying it out and that'd be the end of it, right? It wouldn't be bringing it in and have it sit there for two years.
Yes, yep, that's correct.
So, so.
Can you tell us how high this mound is going to be because there are classrooms right on that side?
Yeah, it will be higher than that, yep. It, I don't know the, the actual height, but it will be, there, they'll be stocked. The piles will be stocked high, you know, and then covered in, in seed and, and protected, but, um, they will be two, two piles. Um, you know, as high as they can stock tw- two thousand yards.
By the end of the school?
Over the windows, hi?
Yes.
It'll be over the windows for sure, yep. Absolutely over the windows, yep.
You've got to be kidding.
And right up next to the building?
Yep. It's not, it's not right, it's not touching the building, but yeah, it's right along the side of the building. Is. Who is gonna like it?
For us to be able to approve it tonight, I said, no way.
I'm, I'm, I'm having less of a problem of them bringing the loam over there. Like, I don't like the idea of the loam, sorry, there's little kids in school. At some point, they're gonna have to open up the windows and spray, like, so air conditioning, and then you're gonna have a big.
I don't think I was one of those talk about that side, I can't remember.
There's along that side.
Why, why are they staring at a mound with dirt with most of my. I mean, that's crazy. I would say we need a plan that looks better than this.
I think it, Karen, would you?
Yes.
Yeah, Alison, I have to agree with that. I, I, at first I was like, no way. Now I'm at least understanding why you guys wanna do that, but I just.
This is the side of the school that's going on, so it's going, it's going in that area, um.
I just.
We did, we, I do wanna say.
Again, everybody's saying this, that, or the other thing, where's the plan? It totally tells me what they're gonna do.
Yeah.
I can show, I do have a plan, am I able to share?
Yes, but the plan that, the plan that I was given is not the same as what you guys told me out there today.
Yes, uh, so, and can I just explain why that is? So we've gone out to the Cushing Site multiple times, um, the first time we met with, um, Jesse Craddock, the, the principal, and he actually recommended this location because of how much that area is not in use and it, it's like people aren't trying to walk through it, it's very out of the way of what they use over there. And then we also went again with Tom Rab, the interim superintendent, and he also recommended this location and, and, and is on board with it, so that's why we're proposing this instead of what was originally proposed on plan, because this made the most sense. Um, but if I can share, let me show you what we, cuz I did just try to mark it up, um.
And obviously, to the most, the principal, a lot of weight.
Well, no, not when I look at that, I mean, yeah.
Can you see this?
It's higher than the windows ago.
But then again, the, the parents have, they wanted this to start on Monday.
And, you know, if it, if it's an issue with like timing and giving people notice for that, that's something we can, we can certainly work out with the contractor. I also wanna mention that the timing for the trucking would definitely be around hours of school operation. We have closed gate areas at the Hathaway Site, the same exact would, uh, happen here at Cushing. Um, we would, you know, we would make sure that they weren't operating outside of, you know, nine to two, when the, you know, definitely not during drop-off or pickup time, so um, that's one thing, but if it is a, you know, we understand this is gonna be activities that no one was expecting, so if it's a timing thing, we can push it off. They're just saying, we have all the soil, we wanna get rid of it as soon as we can, we're trying to get it out of, out of the way so we can do the, you know, build the building, so um, if that's something we need to work out, we can certainly, you know, see if we can push it a couple weeks to get someone to notice. Um, but.
So, yeah.
This is the plan, you can see this plan. Um, so this.
I'm sorry, say it again?
Can you see the plan?
Yes.
They have a, okay.
Blow it up.
So, okay, let me see if I can zoom. Um, just to show, to orient you, this is the drive-in here on this side, can you see my mouse?
Yeah.
Okay, so this drive comes in, and then there's like parking along the side here, and this is where the, the, uh, drop-off and pickup loop is. And then back here is like, um, I assume like teacher parking that comes down here. So there, this is the loading dock right here, and there's a tree right here, and, um, and then there's parking all along this area right here. And then back here is the, these fields that they use, um, so we want to stay away from that area. But right here, they can come in and bring the truck in right here and drop the loam here. I just highlighted this whole area cuz I just did this real quick when, um, just to revise it. But what they're proposing is to have two different stockpiles in, along this area right here, so it would be as wide as it, you know, eh, eh, as they can get it to, to fit within this area along the school. It's gonna be protected by, you know, seeded for cover, there's gonna be a six-foot tall woven wire construction fence, uh, protecting the area so nobody can get to it. Um, silt fencing, um, continuous around the stockpile. Um, so the, this is, this is the area next to the school. I mean, as far as exact footage away from the building, this might not be as accurate. Um, it's just a, um, a sketch, but it's just to show you where it is. So the reason why this location was selected is because it is out of the way of this field, it's out of the way of, where all the activities come, you know, cars coming in and out of the site, kids aren't walking through this. It, you know, there's more, there were some other areas over here, and then there's another one right at the entrance that we looked at, but kids are gonna be walking in and out of the school, we just wanted it to stay, be away from where the kids were, you know, just for make sure that no one's trying to climb, you know, climb the fence or climb the pile and keep away.
And how many yards of thi- of this is it again?
It's two hu- it's two thousand.
So it's two thousand tons of material.
Two thousand yards.
Adjacent to a building, has anybody looked at the impact to potentially the building and the foundations? Somebody's certified that they could put that much weight on?
Um.
What's this going on grass? It's not leaning up against the building, right?
It's.
It's not, yeah, it's not on the building foundation.
There's a sewer, and there's a sewer covering it.
Yeah, it's right, there, there's a sewer line that goes.
Sewer line goes right there.
Yeah, that will be plated, that would be plated and, and covered, uh, protected.
So you've had, you've had your structural engineers look at this and certify that this is okay?
No, we have not looked at this from a.
Somebody should.
Yeah.
That's gonna put a lot of additional weight on the soil and fa- and foundation wall.
Certainly, um.
There is a sewer claim.
On.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
I just don't think this is well enough thought out to say, okay, go ahead.
It's a law and church, so I guess we, maybe we should just direct them as what they need to do before we.
And that's why I say, so come back with a plan, tell us that you've evaluated all these things.
Yeah, so, so let's go through what we've evaluated, that, that, that actually, especially if there's a sewer line under there.
We need a structural engineer to certify that will hold good.
Hold what, I'm sorry, can you just clarify what you want the structural engineer to certify? I don't know that.
Make sure the earth, make sure the grass doesn't cave in.
Make sure it's not gonna create a problem with building or the under, any underground structures. It's a lot of weight.
And just don't forget it on the outside of that building, the tunnels that are not filled in. Four-foot tunnels.
Yes, we are aware of the tunnels, we're not going to be.
Where they come from?
We're not gonna be covering the tunnels, it's around. So the structural engineer has certified that, that it's not too much weight on the drainage line? And the, um, sewer line?
You're, you're adding, you're adding two thousand tons to this area of material.
But it's not on the foundation of the building?
It's, it's additional pressure on the earth.
So I didn't know that a structural.
Are you saying that there's no influence of that weight on the foundation or foundation wall? You've certified that.
We have, we have not certified anything with the structural.
Somebody should.
Okay, to say that it's not going to impact the building.
Yeah, cuz we don't wanna, while the kids are in the school, we don't want problems, right? And if there's anything, and if nobody's done the underground investigation, well, it should, right?
And then, and then the sewer line too.
Yeah, we know, we know what's underlying on this, the sewer line and what's under those. There's a grease trap and then, um, the sewer line that, you, you can actually see it on this plan, it goes out, um, from here to, to the leaching field.
Yeah, and all that said, you know, still seems like an idea to put it right next to it. To the windows.
And then I think that, that.
How tall is it, sorry?
The school, we don't know how tall it's gonna be. You're saying it's gonna be like eight, six or eight feet, right?
Oh, at least, yeah, probably higher than that. I, I can get an exact height, but it's.
I mean, is there any way to spread it out someplace else? There's nowhere else it can go, how much more?
Why can't you?
I'm not.
What, what, what else could be considered?
Everybody, everybody in your class, it's in here.
Why can it not go in back of Hathaway School to the right?
So, there's a couple reasons for that. First of all, we don't have the space on the Hathaway Site, the Hathaway Site is very, very tight as it is, so we don't have the space to stockpile anything like that of the, of this size. The second reason is that would be handling the material twice. So, eh, we would be moving it and stockpiling in one location and then having to truck it and move it back in two years when we need it in.
Well, that's effectively what you're doing now, when you send it offsite and then truck new stuff in.
That, exactly, that's what we're trying to avoid, yep.
Wait a minute, am I missing something? You gotta truck it out and then you gotta truck it back.
No, 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 it's staying in for sure.
New stuff. Different stuff.
We will need to do that if we don't stockpile this. We will need to truck new material that will be purchased and bring that in.
Right, and that's in fact is what they bid on.
Which is not part of the bid, is, is, you know, that's not how they bid it, they bid it reusing some of this.
Well, how the heck did they bid it and not know where they're gonna put it?
They knew, they, they knew, we didn't know this because we didn't, we're not the contractor.
Oh, so they just told you about this?
They said, we, we included in our bid reusing this good material that we are, we have at Hathaway and mo- you know, using it for Cushing.
Why can't we put it at least in the location on the map that Karen has?
I'm sorry?
Why, why, why is that out of the question?
Why is what other question?
I don't know what.
My, my map shows it at the end of the parking lot.
That was one of the options, I don't think that that's as big as, of a space. Um, and at the end of the parking lot, um, you, you mean at the entrance?
Where I parked it?
No.
She's got a picture right there.
Right here.
Oh, eh, right here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, so, eh, do, if you remember, that is at the end of the field, so that we think would be mm, they, and the principal didn't think it was as good of a, a location because the kids use this field all the time. So they would, it's, it's in the way, more in the way, that's why they, that's why this was the option, cuz it's kinda just a dead space that nobody's using, nobody walks through there, you don't need to walk through to get to the parking lot or anything, like here, people walk through this area.
Uh, it's eleven feet long.
So when you come off the end of the parking lot, the, the fields are on the end.
Right, right, yeah. Wow, that's just.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
A lot for, for me.
So I, I think we just need to know.
And it's gonna be well thought out, evidently.
I think we need, yeah, what Steve said, and then also, I do think that the parents at the school need to know, it's like, that's, that's a lot.
It is.
It has to be a little nift.
Yeah, I, I think that's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think that you, you need to have a conversation with the superintendent and principal and figure out how you're gonna let parents know what's going on there.
We, we have.
Well, before we do that, get the plan.
Yeah, but. Right, I mean, I think we.
I, can I clarify what plan you're looking for? Because I don't know, I mean, you want a structural engineer to certify that this isn't gonna impact the foundation of the building, eh, in. Certify that this isn't gonna impact the foundation of the building eh in.
I would think you already have that, but I would, I mean, I'm surprised if you don't have it. But if you don't, yes, I think the answer is, we wanna know that somebody has. Done a professional evaluation of this location and it's not gonna create problems for the school. Particularly while people are still in school, right? I I could see if this was empty and you were just throwing stuff anywhere, then then it wouldn't matter as much, right, but.
Is this school, sorry, is this school gonna be here this year and one more year?
Yeah, it will be demoed in twenty twenty seven, summer, summer.
And also the sewer line, make sure that it's not only to be impacted.
Any underground.
Any underground utilities.
By the way, is that just to, I'm just trying to, okay.
So we need a revised site plan. To show where it's going, with the height of the piles. We need to, we need to know all the erosion control that they plan to use. I want a letter from the principal and the superintendent that this is what they agreed to as part of the contract.
Okay, is um.
In addition to what Mr. Perchard wants.
I just don't want it, you know, crushing a foundation wall or something here, it's a lot of weight.
That is.
A cubic yard is a ton.
And then we also need to know a truck route.
The truck dude, they said.
I do have that.
What we talked, it is what it is.
There's only one way in it, and then it go down and mile to Holland to Country Way.
I do, I do have that, if you would like me to share, I can do that.
It it you know what, Allison, we all know there's only one way in.
There's only one way in.
Okay.
So, but how many trucks, you said three days and how many trucks?
Fifteen trucks a day.
Fifteen trucks, fifteen fifteen loads a day, three trucks. So forty five loads they were anticipating for the whole project, yeah.
And maybe that would be something that the neighbors can. Maybe we need to do that over five days. And you have ten trucks a day, I don't know.
So these are.
That's maybe not, just it's a lot for that little.
These are trucks that are gonna have forty four cubic yards of material. This is not just your average dump truck.
It's a dump truck, there's gonna be three of them, so it's forty five loads per day.
They said typical triaxal truck.
If it's forty five trucks and two thousand yards, that's forty four cubic yards per truck.
Yeah, you say so, okay.
That's a big truck.
Well, they said it was not gonna be eighteen wheelers.
They told me it was like a like a Landers truck is what they told me.
Right.
So you see the cab and then you see like this triaxal, maybe that was.
Because I'm not sure an eighteen wheeler can make it up there.
Uh, yeah, I just, I'd like, I'd love to see a forty four cubic yard truck, just like.
Okay, well, we'll we'll make sure we make the first day they come.
No, no, I wanna know it now.
I I think we need to to truck, the actual trucks used evaluated too, to see if they can. Actually how much they can hold and how how if if all the numbers are realistic.
Yeah, I mean, the typical ones that deliver mulch and. Loam and all that stuff, they're like twenty yards. So it's gonna be twice, more than twice that size.
We need a picture of the truck.
You want a picture of the the truck?
Yep, yes.
Well, we just want confirmation, I would like to see the truck that's gonna bring forty five cubic yards.
A day, fifty, they they're gonna make multiple trips.
No, when you said total forty five trips, forty five trucks, total for two thousand cubic yards, right?
Yeah, that's what they told us today.
It's forty four point four cubic yards per truck.
That might be forty seven trips.
Fifteen loads a day in each truck.
Yeah, forty five plus.
So the good thing is that can be done in a week.
Yes.
Yes, we think last word estimating will be because given a little bit more in terms.
Well, it's nine to two.
Nine to two. But I mean, it's a week period, so like.
We would put that restriction nine to two, so that wouldn't interfere with any school hours. Right.
Fifteen trucks, three trucks now. This is a truck every twenty minutes, what I said.
That's a lot of trucks.
That's a lot of trucks there today.
And they dumping next to the school building.
Not only have to dump it, then they have to spread it, right?
Which means they have to bring in some type of. Heavy equipment to spread it.
They won't be spreading it, they'll be stockpiling it, not spreading. You mean, do you mean in twenty twenty seven?
Not now.
Oh, okay.
There's a three axle, forty five cubic yards.
That's a big truck.
That's forty five cubic meters, so that's a little bit there, but that's effectively most of them. No, I didn't.
Okay, uh alright, let's.
I think logistics wise, you know, you're basically saying they're gonna dump at the top. And that's not gonna work, I mean, so how they're actually gonna dump it? And get the piles needs to be uh presented as well.
If it's gonna dump it, then they're gonna have to drive forward and leave a long swath of it.
Right, yeah, right.
Then somebody's probably gotta move it.
Right, exactly, that's what, yeah. They have to move it, they have, they're gonna have to move it somehow to to shape it.
And they need to make sure sure when they dump it, they don't inadvertently dump it too close to the building.
Yeah.
And have it resting against the building.
Yeah, I think we're, I think um, I mean, there's like the whole parking along that side, so I think. You know, we would just block that off. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have them parking there for the week that we're. Yeah.
Yes, there's a lot of parking, and the only time there's ever really bad for this.
Something like plan.
Yeah, we we need a better.
So they're, I mean, they're gonna truck it in and then they're gonna, they're they're gonna dump the soil. As high and then, you know, get it as high as they can get it from dumping it out, so I don't, I don't know, what what? Just, I'm just trying to, I wanna make sure we get the right information for you, so if, so are you looking for a plan of how they're gonna? Dump the soil out?
Yeah, yes. Yes.
I mean.
Like if if the concern is other equipment, or is it?
We need to know if there's gonna be something that us is moving the earth once the trucks leave.
Yeah, I mean, how how are you gonna level it out so you can hydroseed it?
It will be hydroseed in the pile as stockpiled.
Allison, how?
So lumpy?
How wide is that area that there that you have highlighted?
So this, so this is will be broken into two piles. So it'll be like one pile stocked here and one stocked here, so it's just, they're just gonna bring in the trucks. Dump it and then it's, you know, it'll be as wide as they can get it, and then they're gonna do another one right here, so I don't know. And then they're gonna hydroseed the pile in order to to control the dirt from, you know, spreading, that's to to protect the pile.
Of that about ten feet or wider?
Oh, it's wider, it, yeah, it'll be wider than ten feet, I think it'll um. You know, as big as they can get it, they're gonna bring as mu- it it'll it'll be as wi- uh wide here. But I don't think there's other equipment or anything that's gonna be, you know, moving the soil or spreading the soil that. There's just gonna take the trucks and dump it as high as they can.
What are the boxes and stuff it's blown on top of?
I also think that you need to have um a description of after the truck dumps. And then starts to drive away, there can't be any.
No dirt.
No dirt crumbs anywhere, so you're gonna have to make available a sweeper. To um take care of that issue.
Yep.
And we want a truck to water it down so that the dust doesn't go everywhere.
To clear, to clear the area, yeah, we'll we'll, that will definitely be, so just, you know, this part of the description is what you're looking for. Cause that, I mean, they will, they'll have some, Brait will have someone monitoring this, the site contractor's gonna do the work. Brait will have someone monitoring, we have someone out there, Vertex, uh we're the O P M, we have someone out there full time. Um, at the Hathley site, we can, we can have someone here to, you know, full time if. Just watching and, you know, making sure that they're doing all of the things that um that you need. Um, but we would absolutely assume, I mean, uh expect that they would be hmm clear cleaning the site up and not leaving debris. And and anything like that, that would be absolutely expected.
Okay, I would say we get the plan and they get whoever's gonna be responsible for that. Are you in room? Talk to us about it.
Okay.
And I I understand that you're, you know, that that's, that you're sort of managing this thing, but at the end of the day. Person, people who are gonna be responsible for executing this are gonna be the contractor, right? So they should have somebody here telling us how they're gonna do it.
Yes.
Okay, we can do that, um when, when do you meet next or when can we do that, when can we come?
November thirteenth.
Okay.
So, um, so we have a hearing at six thirty that is gonna be immediate continuance. We can put this on next before we get to seven ninety nine Country Way.
Okay.
Then send the plan.
So we need the plan, we need the plan by next Thursday at noon. With all the write up, et cetera, we have, we need everything by next Thursday at noon.
Okay.
And and you know, rather than, you know, we're looking at your map right now, rather than just show it a highlighted area, you know, show.
Yep.
Where the actual piles are gonna be, right, two piles shown, two piles shown.
Hmm, yep, sure, we can do that. Um, I think it's. It's hard to estimate exactly the, like, the width, just based, you know, it, but I think um we can definitely just. Do our best to to show.
Yeah, I think there's there's gotta be a limited work, basically, right? Maybe hard to estimate, but we don't, what we wanna make sure is nobody.
Sure.
Does it incorrectly and ends up piling it against the school wall.
Yeah, they would, they wouldn't do that, we, in it, but there'd be a fence around it, so we're not.
We wanna know how they're gonna make that, make sure that happens.
Yeah, and there, I mean, there's gonna be a fence around it, so we're not, the, it it does, it looks very close to the school, but there it. It's clear, like, the part that's gonna be near the school isn't gonna be stuck, you know, stacked high, straight up, it's gonna be at an angle where the pile is. You know, so that part will be lower, it's, you know, gonna be a mountain, it's like a.
Right, alright.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bye.
No, I found out about it the other day, and I mean, they, we uh they had a site, had a site meeting. Uh, you know, but it's, I think it's a little bit more complicated than if so, anybody's making it out.
We wouldn't accept that, so.
Right, no. And like you said, when you go here, I mean, it it's quite wide and you're.
I have what you do, build a plan.
Yeah, right.
So what's the plan?
What's the plan? So like I said, it's quite wide, but what will be interesting is the, where they're gonna back up is is. No, 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 right, how wide is that truck, it's above, that's why I'm always facing that. To to back up there, so we're we're.
It's gonna make a lot of noise.
Oh, the kids. Well, I did say today that we've already lost children to COVID, I didn't really wanna see anything else happen to children this school year as well. Which is, I don't understand how they do it in a halfway, keep all the kids engaged, I I.
How would they do during the school week?
Right, they can't do it, I mean, they can't be on working hours. Time to hand, how about?
That's not our problem, right, it's like, is it better to have them do it on the weekend when nobody's there? Or have them do it for three truckloads an hour, right, for five hours? While all the kids in the school, right next to them. I don't know. I would, I would say do it off hours. And I would say they will have enough money in their budget to pay for overtime, because they're saving all of that offsite and new mo- new mow. Which is why they wanna do this in the first place.
And she said that they were, the plan in the, in the contract is for them to use that mow from Hathley. Just wasn't under discussed where that mow was going for the two years.
No, she said they their plan was to take it offsite.
They didn't say where.
They didn't say where.
Well, the contractor today told me his bid included reusing the mow.
Didn't say where.
No, it didn't say where, but he said reusing the mow.
Alright, what was your plan, where were you gonna put it?
Right, the outside.
Well, put it there, wherever that was.
I'm sure it wasn't thought.
Oh, you want a cheaper solution, we'll give us a discount or do this on the weekend.
Well, I can ask that question tomorrow.
But the main other problem is then you have kids playing, I I would rather have you in the school year.
Yes.
So now that, then you got little kids running around.
Without any to.
On the weekends, so then you've got all of your families home and those trucks are going up and down that road, you know? More people are working, less kids, less people at home during the day, I mean, it's a.
Yes.
Yes, I mean, I just, uh I feel for the kids, you're gonna sit there for five hours listening to the trucks go beep beep beep, right?
Oh, yes, the beep beep, they'll kill them.
Well, there won't be any education for them watching the trucks.
It's not just one truck.
Education for a week.
It's fifteen trucks.
That's not like a picture for a week, really, if you want a child in the coaching school, that's what you have to, that's what you will be at.
But the superintendent said it was okay, they prefer that. I I agree with you, you should have that in writing.
I will, I will compose an email tomorrow and I want that in writing.
Can can we do laser, Allison? No, we have to do our continued public hearing.
Yeah, we're talking about that.
We'll never have our continued public hearing, major site plan review and stormwater permit for seven ninety nine eight oh one Country Way, we have an immediate continuance. All in favor of this, okay, here we go.
I made the time, change the time to six forty five. That way we can, we can, we can do this first before we do go into this.
Okay.
How about six forty five?
No, since we have a, we have a public hearing at six thirty, we have to continue that, then we're gonna do the school. Then we're gonna do it six forty five, we're gonna continue this public hearing.
On the thirteenth.
I will accept the Apple's request to continue the public hearing for major site plan administrator review and stormwater permit. For two multifamily buildings in the village center, Enigma District, North Citywood Village District, Outer Village Sub District. B C N N S V O B until November thirteenth twenty twenty five at six forty five.
Yes.
P M and continue the time for action, time for November twenty sixth point twenty five.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go.
Alright.
Now?
I mean, nine can we? I don't know, maybe it's not that many, but I can do it.
None of it makes any sense to me, but why not? Okay, I did C P C Monday night and um basketball courts. Basically what came in Monday night was we gave it to a meeting, much of it is being continued until. November, um basketball courts, we do those. Um, it's there falling apart and of course pickleball courts, but. Nobody wants pickleball courts except the three people, at any rate, and then we. Where, at the high school?
No, like the junior high.
Oh, this is at the high school. And then we have, um, they continue, they start, they want one point something million. For um a fitness program.
A what?
Yeah, so that sort kind of went south, here we go. I'm not sure, they haven't figured it out yet, and then. I'm not sure, they haven't figured it out yet, and then we had a discussion about Pier Forty Four Park construction and that's gonna run about six million, maybe they can come up with a three million dollar grant. And then, um, the Morticamp Link Phase Two, to keep going forward with that. Um.
We're not got money.
Money, wow, and then, um, we had on here, um, the Cranley Ford acquisition, but we really, really came to that. So then I went to traffic rules, that was, what was that, Tuesday, and the busy girl, um. What do you, parking on Ken Street, complete first parish and vinyl app, they're only gonna let them park on the east side. Speed limit concerns for Sand Hills neighborhood, you can speed it fast, and the same thing, speed limit on any road. And the um redefine traffic, they eliminated fifteen minute parking in front of the old postal office in North Situate. Um, they have an additional traffic schedule to include new sections with lifeguards following the score spaces up along the wall, Situate on the beach. Um, reduce parallel parking limits on Blaze Road. And then there was a lot of discussion about regulations for e-bikes and motor scooters. E-bikes.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, e-bikes have become a real issue, and they're dangerous.
We have two in my neighborhood, they're in luggage right.
Right.
Yeah, eight nine also, yeah, not a private tax.
And golf reg, golf cart reg- regulations, because there are people running around on, in golf court carts, and they are supposed to be less.
My neighbor Redstone.
Whoa.
Uh, they they put a boom field in Quack.
Yeah, well, and then you read, and then eighteen to twenty Country Way. That's what I'm doing, my liaison, took two hours, okay.
So I went to zoning and, um, it's reinforced that uh the zoning board does not know what their job is, still. Uh, but they must have heard me wrong, Claire, because one of the alternate members was very clear to say, we better make sure we look at the news regulated by law table, to make sure what we're doing is right, they still, they did a thing on thirty five, leave a deer road, which is self-screwish. They can't understand that what's already written is what they're supposed to be abiding by, they have a real hard time understanding what news that they're supposed to be following. So they did that one, uh, they don't know if it's gonna be A D R, if it's gonna be addition, then we had a lot of trouble, a lot of setbacks, that kind of stuff, um. They wanted to move house on my land, the neighbors were all in another world, so it's gonna destroy the carriage of the neighborhood, but it's down our road town. Uh, I do plan on going to select board on Tuesday night. And voicing my dismay, my entire neighborhood, what a copy of the decision for the gas station, nobody knew what it was about, because we had never been given a butter notice that there was a violation in the first place. So you can't have a decision if you don't have a butter notice for people to know that there was a meeting. The letter also didn't register the vote, it's a two one vote, and it also had all five members signed it and not with the title, so it was also, so there's lots of issues that zoning board is pretty powerful and, um, they need they need a little tutorial, what they need, what it is, what their curfew is. That, and I'll go back and listen to the classification by the list of that. Anybody else to do liaison, wanna know who to see? Okay, Karen?
Alright, so they're putting the top coat on at Seaside at Situate.
Wow.
Little traffic.
And they got, um.
Twenty thirty.
It's supposed to take three days, they're kinda hoping it'll only take two, but when we left there this afternoon, they are, they are just about getting close to the limit of what they were supposed to get done today, so I think it's really gonna take three days. Um, it looks good so far, I mean, then they'll have to go back and do all the appropriate striping, um, et cetera, so.
But a lot of the driveways are left with the street.
Um, so it's finally.
Do they have to move manholes and all that stuff?
All the manholes are raised and catch basins are all raised, everything's all ready, they can start the curbing. Um, they admit they will never use that type of curbing again.
And no more teeth.
Um, and, um, so, well, in one hour at a time, we'll wait and see when it's, uh, when it's done. And I'm supposedly supposed to be, um, Mark Novak, you know, in the next, sometime soon, close on the tennis courts over at the high school, to the tennis courts. Uh, but we're in the process of working on that. So, like I said, we've been, been trying to contemplate zoning articles that we might need for the Springtown meeting and, um, work on all the lovely projects that we have right now. I think John Cheshire is gonna have some, uh, choice comments next time on seven ninety nine Country Way. You know, they delivered, they delivered stuff plans to his house on Saturday morning. And John, I I called John on Monday and I said, you haven't done anything, right, and he goes, no. You know, when you get an email at six o'clock on Friday night that, oh, they fixed it, and John is going to tell you that Hydro Pad had to, had to have had error messages that they were. So, it's not ready, it wasn't ready for primetime and we're, I called the plot.
Okay.
So.
They're not ready, they're not ready for that.
Right, so they weren't ready for tonight.
We'd like to see the cabin school, it's a mess.
During, well, they haven't really schooled, we, you know, we stopped by today and the stabilized construction entrance needs to be beefed up a little bit, they they, you know, they say they have a water truck, but, you know, we saw our fair amount of dust, and, um, you know, we'll just have to keep on them. Um, the police has, the police have been on them, um, it, you know, it got to the point that I threatened initially the state police truck team, and there was a member who lives in town, well, then Mark Thompson told me he's retired. But Mark Thompson did threaten the state police truck team himself, um, I guess they were, they they were, trucks were going too fast.
Yeah.
And so they was, they've been spoken to and everything has been good this week so far.
And it's the soil and erosion control stuff in good shape.
Last time I went on site, it was, yeah. I haven't been on site since before I went on vacation, but we just quickly drove in, um, today and, you know, it was.
But no complaints that, like, washouts and stuff like that, you know?
And so, you know, it's, it'll keep, you know, some points, I'll go on site.
Yeah, and and no tracking dirt, construction, it's.
Um, well, they didn't, they had a sweeper today.
Yeah.
I mean, the rug was dusty, but they were sweeping it, so I mean, that's why I sent an email as soon as I got back, say that the stabilized construction engine needs to be beefed up.
That's crushed up, you know, that's.
They have big, they have big stone, you know, the the three to four inch stone, but it still needs to be beefed up, when it gets filled with dirt, then it doesn't do its job.
Yeah, yeah. But you just gotta keep maintaining.
You have to keep maintaining.
Well, I'll say that.
I think so.
I don't educate a motion, so. I'm in favor.